I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Implication we have not. We'll just have a moment of silence, please. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of our citizens and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? I just wanna uh say something about the faith Lutheran had a uh supper or a community supper on, I believe it was Sunday night. So just wanna thank them for doing that and uh actually uh the Dan out at the brewery had a food truck fair. Uh Dave, you you were out there. They had very well attended, I take it?
Yes, it was uh well attended and uh if you like kids and like having fun with kids, well, it was uh it was really a lot of fun. But we had, I don't know how many total people that were there, but um I don't like to lie. We had a dart and balloon thing and uh I think we went through two hundred balloons. So it's a lot of blood, darts, swords and uh but all the vendors were uh great vendors and and supporters of community and the food trucks were uh many of them. You didn't know where you wanted to eat. Couldn't eat often enough to keep supplying them with money, so we're trying to, but it was a great event. It was a a good community event and uh turned out well, so thank you.
Yes. Uh we do have a resolution underneath there. Uh it's resolution number one five three three zero. Resolution accepting gas donations for the law enforcement memorial park fund.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. Uh public comment. Anybody that wants to address the council, please come forward, state your name and address. Alrighty, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of June twenty second, two thousand twenty one.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Brandon, second by Dave to approve the minutes from uh June twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Uh consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh A is approval of purchase of Creekside Bag Film. Uh B is approval of change order number two, letting number one, project number twenty one dash oh one. The two thousand twenty one pavement management program. Uh C is approval of resolution number one five three three one, resolution ending the temporary utility billing protocol in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. D is approval of resolution number one five three three two, resolution to sell at auction surplus equipment. And that would be a two thousand aerial bucket truck. Uh E is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the McCloud County Agricultural Association on August nineteenth through the twenty second, two thousand twenty one for the McCloud County Fair. Uh F is approval of the forty seventh annual arts and crafts festival to be held September seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand twenty one in Library Square and First Avenue Southeast Hassan Street. Uh G is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Uh we will uh we do have a public hearing, but uh we'll uh skip ahead to um discussion on council vacancy and next steps.
Um mayor and council, as I shared with you over the weekend, we did receive um ten uh interest forms from candidates within the community who've expressed some interest in and I guess helping us out and filling that vacancy on an interim basis, which is great. Uh that number of interest is great. Now, the tough part is for you guys to figure out where you wanna go from here. Um and so that was, I guess, the reason for putting this on the agenda tonight was um you've solic- solicited for interest. We received um obviously forms from ten individuals within the community who are interested in serving on the council. And really, I guess, the question for um for you guys is, okay, where do you wanna go from here? Um you know, as we've shared in the past, the charter notes that it's responsibility of the city council to to fill the vacancy. Uh outside of that, it doesn't really give you any direction. Um and so this is kinda going from scratch here. And so I think we're, I guess what I'm looking for is what's the process you guys wanna use from here to to move forward and and looking to to fill that vacancy. I know I had thrown out there as a suggestion, you know, potentially doing interviews with the ten candidates, but it's really, I guess, um up to you guys to determine, you know, what that process is moving forward and how you'd like to go about uh filling the vacancy.
Well, I guess I'll I'll kinda start it off. Uh I know me, uh councilman, uh member uh Christensen's not here, but uh I did have a uh one conversation with her and I guess the consensus between me and her, I guess, and we'll, I'll just throw it out is that uh uh we would like to set up uh interviews with all the candidates that are interested in being interviewed for the for the council seat. Um and then uh I don't know if you guys wanna just uh interview all of them that are interested and then uh pick some from that and narrow it down to four or whatever and then re-interview or if you just wanna do one interview and then kinda try to get a consensus of uh who we wanna pick. So I guess that was kinda the discussion I had with uh with Mary, so.
And was, were you guys thinking like a written one or a oral or?
Uh oral one, yeah.
And because of the open meeting lot has to be live, open door, John, yeah?
Yeah, and I, you know, like I told Mary is that that uh I know that uh there is ten and and I thought we should open it up to, you know, have them if they are interested to say that you wanna interview.
Sure.
You know, 'cause there might be some that will decline our interview. I don't know. But they just have that option out there for them.
Were you thinking like giving everybody twenty minutes and asking everybody the same four questions or like just open?
Well, um I guess, yeah. Well, like I, I kinda had a little conversation with uh Matt this morning and um I thought we kinda threw some stuff around and uh maybe have uh think up of four questions and, you know, give them to them and uh depending on if all ten wanted to be interviewed, I thought we could do five one night and five another night this, you know. Um unless you guys all wanna just crunch through it all one night, but that gets to be a long evening for everyone. So I guess uh it's open for discussion, so what do you think? Uh just uh think up of four questions and and actually give them to them and and so they're prepared when they come. Maybe speed up the the process a little bit.
I think that's fair, 'cause a lot of times, like, we know exactly what we're talking about here. You know, we get our information ahead of time.
Correct.
And are able to do research, so they should be able to have that same luxury.
Dave, your thoughts?
Sure. Yeah, I was uh it's still a fair way probably to do it, so I think we wanna leave it all door open to everyone and have, give them the opportunity to talk to uh the council, certainly.
You know, I threw out a suggestion to both Chad and Gary. Um you know, if you wanna come up with a structure and then Gary kinda touched on it, you know, whether it's a a series of three or four questions, a time limit. So it's, you know, kinda everybody knows in advance, hey, you, these are the four questions or whatever, however many is that you wanna ask. These are the questions. You've got twenty-five minutes, whatever it is, um and then we're gonna move on to the the next candidate. Um I think, you know, that would help with the process. Otherwise, if it's a my concern and obviously it's up to you guys to determine if it's a free-for-all. You could have some that are here for ten minutes, some that are here for an hour, um and just kinda gets away from, but it's really up to, I guess, you guys on on how you wanna go about it. Or you could just simply set a time limit and, you know, I could have a series of questions if you wanted to at least go off of and ask as you may. I mean, we could send all the questions out saying, hey, we're gonna pick a couple from this list. Um I don't know. It's, I guess, that's the direction to help staff um prepare these individuals. I guess good to know from you guys how you'd like to go about.
I think a timeline is good. Number one. Number two is, is that uh maybe you don't have to ask all three or four questions. Either you pick a question that is most interesting to you and go from there, so.
I like that you have four questions for the same all the people and if time a lot was at the end, but have a time limit. If people have things they wanted to ask after the four questions have been answered, who will determine the four questions then? And how would we determine those?
That's a good question. I mean, I could I could easily send out uh a list of questions for you guys to look at. Um I was actually already thinking about it, so I wrote ten questions down tonight, so if you to look at that list or if you wanted to come up with something on your own. Um you know, I guess the other question is, when do you wanna do? We know that Mary's not gonna be back, is not gonna be available, I should say, I think until next Wednesday or Thursday. I think next Thursday is earliest should be available. Um you know, so that's the timeframe too, so if there's a.
Well, one thing that I kinda discussed with Matt too is that uh, you know, we're we're not any, under any time constraints, so I wanna.
No, but it would be nice to have somebody seated.
Right.
As soon as possible. So Mary's back on the twenty second or the fifteenth?
Um the twenty second.
Yeah.
Um.
Nation, yeah, so.
Cause we'll have to set it as a public meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
You know, so that's, I guess, the question. Do you wait to, I mean, you could easily set a meeting tonight, you know, or if you drag it out, you have to you could set something like a council meeting. The mayor could always select a you can, the mayor can always call a special meeting as well. So, you know, I mean, you could schedule something between now and the next council meeting. Once you have, I mean, it's gonna be Mary gets back a couple days before the next council meeting, so um you know, from a a question standpoint, it's it's, you know, we're not making a policy decision or a a formal action of the council, and so I can just get feedback from, I could send out a list if there's a certain questions you wanna see answered, you can send that back to me. I can kinda compile something and um try to enforce something that.
I mean, you wanna do two, like, two rounds of them and do them like the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, like, at four o'clock started?
The twenty-sixth and the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Uh Monday and Wednesday, you're thinking, Chad?
Yeah. It's Tuesday, we already have a council meeting.
Right.
And a workshop. Thought we could just be council all the time?
Yeah, I mean, that would give us enough time, you know, we spend the next couple days thinking about some questions. That would give us the time then to to get that out to the candidates, you know. Like I said, maybe it's a list of you know, more of these, wanna ask these four or five, and then these are some ones that may come up, depending on the time that, yeah, they have, so. Are we thinking on the half hour?
Why don't we limit it to twenty-five minutes for the, then we'll have a five-minute break in between?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be, yeah, it, you know, the gives about a five-minute, five-minute discussion on each question you're thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be fine with me.
Yeah, I think obviously you communicate that in advance, say you're gonna have twenty-five minutes where, you know, we're gonna be asking these four or five questions, so, you know, keep that in mind when it comes to time, timeframe and lengthiness, so.
That gives, gives the candidates uh uh time to reach back out and see if they're still interested or not.
So then, Gary, could you reach out to Mary to see if those dates work for her and if so, set special meetings for those times?
I can do that.
Or you could do it right now as a council. I guess if it doesn't work, then you just have to cancel it. You could cancel those days.
That's no big deal. Cancel it?
No, so, I mean, I would.
I don't wanna just set those, Chad.
You could set those days and then.
I would make a motion to set the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth at four o'clock for a special council meeting.
With the intention to interview five candidates at each one of those uh times.
If there's five per minute that wanna go up, and if not, we'll just split it up evenly if there's only six or eight or whatever.
Sure, yeah.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
I was sending out a list of questions. I would say if you've got anything in particular that you'd like to see asked, um kinda let me know and we can work at, hopefully kinda we're laying something down hopefully by the end of the week or beginning of next week, so.
Happy good.
Have a good week to prepare, so.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Uh we got still a little time here. Uh second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight twenty-three an ordinance to rezon property at one twenty-six and one thirty-five Franklin Street Northwest from a C three central commercial district to a mixed use district as requested by the city of Hutchinson and property owner.
Mayor Clinic, this is um the old medical clinic site to um just from a reference standpoint. We had our first reading at the the last council meeting. Um there's been no changes to that, the first reading of that ordinance since that, since that meeting. So staff would recommend um that you um have a second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one eight two three.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve. Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Alrighty, um we have second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight twenty-four an ordinance amending section one fifty-four point zero six three of the city code regarding conditional permitting permitted use in a C three central commercial zoning district.
Once again, mayor and council, we had a first reading of this ordinance at our last council meeting. There's been no changes or adjustments to that ordinance. And once again, this is in relation to um light industrial use within the 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 C three commercial zoning district.
Make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve. Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Alrighty, we'll move on to new business. Um streetlight management program, LED transition.
Yes, uh something staff's been working on. I'll turn it over to John here shortly. Uh but uh yeah, in conjunction with with Hutch Utilities, uh between myself, John Paulson on the sustainability front and and John, John Olson here, Marson on the policy and uh maintenance front, uh we developed what we're calling a program uh to address streetlights and ultimately, it it factors into the maintenance effort that Hutch Utilities is currently doing and that basically utilizing that maintenance effort to to uh begin an implementation of LED fixtures. So we've been incorporating LED fixtures for some time into uh into our projects, uh and we've come up the learning curve between us and utilities. Uh you know, we're, we rely a lot on Dave Hunstead, uh both from a an LED fixture standpoint and also Dave uh basically holds uh the arrangement to provide our our fiber grass poles and our decorative street poles. So uh with that, must John, does he have anything else to add? And maybe you just touch on the funding.
Sure, sure. Um like you said, for the last five years or so, we've been putting LED streetlights in in any of our new projects. Um we looked at over the last ten years or so, uh we're at the point after a couple years ago when Amoresco did some of their work to evaluate potential energy savings. Um they indicated that there would be savings with LED streetlights, but the project cost included a bunch of upfront labor costs to install the uh LED streetlights, and that's what led us to start thinking about, um, well, we already have Hutch Utilities out touching two to three hundred streetlights a year. Why not just supply them with materials and then they can just make the conversion while they're out there anyway? Um that would not really cost us anything other than the materials. So we did a a bunch of evaluation and and um you know, with the work Amoresco did and with what we worked on after that, um you know, we're, we pretty much know exactly what every streetlight needs. And uh, you know, ranging from two hundred fifty dollars worth of materials up to, you know, close to two thousand dollars of materials, just depends on the installation. Um so we figured out that uh our annual materials cost would be roughly about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred a year or about seven hundred and eighty-eight per streetlight. And uh so we think that program costs will land somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand per year. And we worked with Andy Reed to come up with uh uh funding sources. And so we will be taking sixty thousand from the um infrastructure maintenance account. And that account would first cover any pole replacements and then the balance would be applied to other uh materials. And then a maximum of a hundred fifteen thousand from the capital projects fund. So for a total maximum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. Um and the capital projects would be uh used after the infrastructure maintenance fund and would also be net of any rebates that we that were available. And at this point in time, we're looking at about twenty, twenty-one sixty per uh fixture and rebate cost. So that would be credited back to the capital projects fund. We have about just short of two thousand streetlights and right now, we're at about sixteen percent are LED, eighty-four percent are not. And this would transition us to fully have um LED streetlights in a roughly a six to eight, six to seven years um with using this system uh of supplying uh Hutch Utility staff with the materials they need to make the conversions in lieu of relamping. So I think it was a a good program. I also put together some documentation that we use internally, you know, to help understand uh how we look at streetlights and how we manage them and take care of them, so. Uh very similar to what we're doing at other public works facilities already. Right now, we do not uh repair any fixtures. We replace them instead with LED fixtures. We uh recently um you know, at the airport, for example, we put in taxiway guidance signs. We just eliminated the the old incandescent fixtures and put in LED fixtures, so. Um that's similar, like I said, to what, it's the same concept as we've been using um elsewhere in public works, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
John, how much brighter are are these lights than the old ones?
It's not necessarily bright is the issue. Um and I think uh the work that was done with engineering staff and Hutch Utilities early on have really dialed this down into the right fixture. Um it, the difference really ends up being what you can see i- in color versus what you, with a high-pressure sodium, they're they're kind of a yellowish, orangish glow to them. And your color perception isn't as good with that type of light. Um with the LED, it's much crisper and cleaner and you can see colors at night much better um with that.
It it just looks brighter.
Yes.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, if you look directly at the light fixture itself, it's gonna look brighter.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully people aren't doing that too much when they're driving. But I think, I think the, what we've learned and what John's alluding to is the the industry as a whole has become more standardized from a street lighting standpoint. Whereas when we did Second Avenue and Golf Course Road, when we talked a lot about those corridors and between ourselves and utilities, we were, you know, I'll admit, we were coming up the learning curve at that point. And I think the industry as a whole was coming up the learning curve. Now, now you're basically standard, standardized. I believe it's a, you know, it's a hundred watt bulb that's at three K. Now, three thousand K alludes to the warmth of the bulb and how bright it is and ultimately how white it is. So that's not as white as like a five K bulb or, you know, four per se. So the industry has landed on this hundred watt, three K, you know, standard.
It's just a perception that it
Yeah.
it looks the.
It's different, yes. Very much different, yes.
It's like the coverage is wider, whatever you wanna say, you know.
And that's, yeah, that's the beauty of them is the coverage, uh the uh the color, being able to see more or color
Right.
differentiate with colors. Yeah, and then obviously they're more directional. That gets into the coverage. You know, there's, there's multiple LED beams, you know, coming out of that fixture instead of just the old typical high-pressure sodium bulb, which is what we're familiar with. I think the other thing, just to mention quickly, is uh the payback and
Yeah.
we're not stressing payback, but it it's a reality and and uh and we've already seen it in the you know, the electrical street lighting annual
Yes.
bill contribution, whatever you wanna call it, between us and utilities, that even at sixteen percent, you know, there's some real savings that are already being arrived at. And I believe if with basically utilities absorbing the labor, I believe Mr. Hunstead's rough math was about six years on the payback.
Correct. Six, yes. Basically the same amount of time, 'cause y- you're gonna drop your your um operating cost roughly six to ten percent each year, between that range. Depends on how much of X we do versus Y, but um but that that's, it's gonna drop as we go on an average of roughly seven or eight percent. But that, that's, it's gonna drop as we go on an average of roughly seven or eight percent, so.
And you should get twenty years out of these.
Yeah.
These fixtures.
Versus how much with the sodium bulbs?
They do a five-year relamp on those.
Really?
Yeah. Yes, so.
Yeah, we're just recommending, basically we're recommending that council approve the program. Uh, and, and the funding sources per finance and, you know. I think what we'll plan on doing on an annual basis going forward is just bringing this back annually and. You know, the funding scenarios might change a little bit over time.
Yeah.
Depending on, you know, what's being dedicated, otherwise within the capital projects fund. But, uh, yeah, we're, this should play out over six, seven years and we should be to a hundred percent LED at that point. As far as the city's streetlights, you know, obviously men not in the, uh, well, I shouldn't say that, I think.
Think we're pretty much have most of them, so.
I think Highway seven might be all that remains.
Yeah, I, I believe so, yeah.
It's all city lights up out on Adams, we're responsible for on the county system, which there isn't much of, so at that point, it might just be Highway seven.
Mm-hmm.
Just for the council's knowledge, when it comes to the, the capital, we're using, um, about a hundred fifteen thousand from our undesignated LGA. That we put in the capital of year, basically for future projects and that's, this is what we be identifying as that funding, that funding source, so. So the only potential pressure would be if LGA gets.
Sure, we'd have to review it and it's about, that's why we thought it's more of a maintenance type of thing because. You know, who knows what's gonna happen next, so.
How, what's the average, John, of, of, uh, fixtures that failed over the year? Hard telling?
It is, uh, I would say you're in the twenty to thirty. Um, you know, roughly ten percent of what you touch is bad, bad, like throw it away, get a new one type, so.
Alrighty, thanks Ken, thanks John.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion on that, Gary, so.
Very, uh, have a motion for the maintenance program.
I will make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon, any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Alrighty, we have a couple of public hearings, um. First one is issuing on sale intoxicating liquor license to Raymond Zully Junior. Doing business as, uh, River House Kitchen and Drink located at one twenty-two Main Street South.
Oh, Mayor and Council, obviously this is the Hutch Cafe, the old Hutch Cafe location that's being renovated and. I guess rebranded, you could say, into a new restaurant. Um, part of our ordinance requirement is that any new liquor license requires, uh, before issuing one from the council. Does require, uh, a public hearing, um, and so that's, uh. I guess what we're here for tonight is to provide that, uh, public comment period, um, before, um, council making a decision on whether or not to issue that license.
Alright, we'll open it up for public comment. I see Mr. Zully's here, you wanna say anything, Mr. Zully? Here's your chance to get on camera. Ready, um, motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad, to close the public hearing. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the license. Any other discussion?
Chad, you didn't wanna add that condition that we talked about?
No, I talked to Ray on the street the other day about the chicken broaster and I didn't wanna make it an official, um, condition of the license. But he knows my feelings on the broaster and the lucrative, um, rewards he'll have if he brings it back, cause I like fried chicken, so. That's up to him, it's his business if he wants, so.
Alrighty, call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Alrighty, our second public hearing, uh, for First Avenue Southeast Improvement Project, letting number. Ten, project number twenty-one dash ten. Uh, there is a resolution underneath there, one five three two nine, resolution adopting assessments.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you may recall, the last meeting, we did a work this, this project, the First Avenue Northeast Improvement. In conjunction with the Jefferson Street Extension Project. Uh, so this evening, we're, we're simply, as, as, uh, Mayor Forseer noted, uh. Need to have blessed the resolution adopting the assessment role associated with the project and we are assessing. Uh, I believe three properties in the end, out along the First Avenue Northeast Corridor, so. Uh, we, yeah, like I mentioned last time, we got a very good bid, uh, we are assessing per our established city. Fee schedule, so the rates established for this type of work within the fee schedule. Uh, we, we believe the, uh, the assessments are reflective of the benefit that's gonna be delivered to adjacent property owners. And, uh, with that, construction's underway, uh, the first stage to get the assault end Jefferson opened up. And get access into the liquor store parking lot, uh, should be finished up this week. Uh, they were gonna pave that little bit tomorrow, but that might not happen with the weather, but I'm guessing it'll happen Thursday, Friday at the latest. And then they'll be on to the second stage, which is the remainder of the project. Uh, completing Jefferson Street and, and moving on to, uh, the partial reconstruction work on First Avenue. And that is slated for final completion on or before Saturday, September eleventh. And I believe addresses, obviously is, addresses the arts and crafts issue that we spoke about before. And, yeah, unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
You have any questions, Ken? Am I ready? I'll open up for your public comment.
Hi, sorry. Alright, Morgan Baum, uh, property owner, twenty-two First Avenue Northeast, one of the three being assessed. Um, three quick questions, thank you for moving it up and completing before arts and crafts, that makes a big difference. Second, um, did you look into the parking, um, uh, how wide are the parking spaces gonna be when you? Cause right now they're at twelve feet on the road and I had, when I came before, I asked about reducing them to match Hassan. The width of this parking spaces.
I think we're reflecting what's there, I. Yeah, I don't, we'll look and see if we can squeeze another stall in there. I'm a, it all depends on the angle of parking and that's driven by the width of the roadway.
Okay.
So the angle, the degree of the angle parking can vary a little bit downtown. I'll say with respect to Hassan out here, I know some of the dynamics. Near the library are less than desirable with that, with that parking, so that might be more so on the narrow side and.
Yeah, I was looking at eight and, um, Parkview Dental that corner, there are, um, eight feet over there. So they're a little bit smaller.
Those aren't even standard, if that's how they're strength at this point.
Yeah.
I'll say that much.
If we could just talk about it.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll do and I'll make a note of it, we'll, we'll review it and if we can squeeze in another stall, we'll squeeze in another stall, but. I'm guessing it is what it is at this point.
Okay, and then my other request is better signage for the one-way on the alley. Um, we have been, um, watching everybody come out backwards, um, you know. Uh, going south to north on the alleyway, um, and, uh, we've almost, most of our team has almost been hit once or twice. So it'd be really great if we could beef up the signage for the one-way so that you can tell that it's a north to south alley.
John, and I can review that.
Okay.
But I will say, no matter how many signs we put up and how big and bright they are, I don't think it'll eliminate or solve that issue.
I was thinking that the way we could make it better is the parking lot right there, when people come out, there's not a sign right at the parking lot to tell people they're supposed to be going. To the south, and so if you add that right at the parking lot, when people are in the public parking, they'll see that they're supposed to turn, take a, take a left.
Okay, guys, yeah, I might be more so.
I think we can approve what's there.
Okay, great, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it.
I hear you, but yeah, I know with some of the dynamics with their, our one-way alley system, yeah, downtown.
Alright.
I was gonna say that problem's not exclusive to your block, like the one behind my shop's the Wild West as well, like. Especially cause during the highway project, they switched the direction of it, cause of the one-way. And now people just forgot about that, so then like delivery trucks will meet in the middle and that's awesome.
Yeah.
Your one wins.
But no, I, I know where you're coming from with respect, that there is a dynamic with people leaving the parking lot there, that they could be better directed.
Right.
Yeah, I follow you now.
Perfect, alright, well, I'm looking forward to the new road, so, thank you.
Should be coming sooner than later, I know the contractor is, is pushing to get it done, he has other work to do. What we're hearing, so, all good.
Alright, any other comment? Not, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to close the public hearing. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Um, motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve resolution number one five three two nine. Any other discussion? Not call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Alrighty, um, governance, uh, we have Economic Development Authority Board minutes from May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The Hutchinson Utilities Commission minutes from April twenty-eighth and May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The Library Board minutes from May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, Hutchinson, uh, Liquor Hutch Quarterly Report. Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us? And I do have something for you too.
I had a residence up on Northwoods, uh, asked if, uh, maybe could, uh, beef up the patrol up there. Uh, had, uh, some near misses, I guess, with, uh, pedestrians up there, so.
Yes, we can make sure that happens.
Okay, I told her I'd make sure I did it on camera, so she knows I did it, so. Did my duty, anything else, Chief?
Uh, no, I don't think so, unless anybody has something for me.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Olson?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything for us? So as I do have something for you too. And Ken, maybe?
You first.
Okay, I'll go first, uh, that, uh, uh, on the northeast side of First Avenue. Or it'd be Washington, right, Washington and Adams?
Yes.
There's, uh, over by Ole's on that side, there's a evidently, if you walk from the sidewalk and by the Liquor Hutch. And go east.
Yeah.
There's just a curb there.
There's not a ramp.
There's not a ramp, and I guess people been on northeast corner, right in front of Ole's.
Facing west, yeah, 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 yeah.
So I know there's no, no ramp, but I, like, uh, when I talked to John, you know, at least, you know, we've. Till maybe can fix that.
Yeah.
Or at least get it painted yellow, so, cause I've been reported that there's been a couple, uh. People rolling their bikes at the curb, so.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it on the schedule as far as replacement too at some point, so.
But that ties into the ADA.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
So.
Implementing.
Alright. Uh, just wanna say thank you to the, uh, we did a fair bit of patching on First Avenue, uh, northwest. Uh, near the Burger King and Dunn Brothers and that area, and I just wanna thank, uh, business owners and. Uh, people for putting up with us for a couple of days there, but, uh, it should be a significant improvement in the ride on that. Block of street, so, that's all I had.
Since you've been sitting in the back so patiently, do you have anything for us? No?
Unless you have something for me also.
No. Ken?
Yeah, a couple things on the project front. Uh, pavement management program down at the rec center, everything's going very well, so, uh, we did put some tile in if you. Went out to the, the pool or the rec center area there, we had to put some tile in to address some style spots in that new parking lot, but. I, I think the good thing is we feel we, we caught it in time before the underlying groundwater started to cause too many issues. Obviously, there's some extra costs to be incurred by the city, but, uh, yeah, not good. The water was coming, uh, from below, when it usually impacts projects when it comes from above, obviously.
Did you find some old drain tile?
Yeah, they, well, that was a change order that was approved tonight, was the reconnection of a handful of drain tiles, yeah, so. No, they, they did their, their duty and, uh, you know, addressing tiles that, that, that they cut along the way and they were conscientious about, uh. Looking for them as they put the storm sewer in and, and did that work, but, uh. Not to say that something doesn't get crushed, you know, directly under the trench unknowingly or one slips by them, but, uh. We just think it was, you incorporate a new trench and you, you're in an area that, uh, you know, was a known, you know. Square area, and, uh, and, uh, there were, there were some, you know, some film materials. That were less than desirable to build that area up on what it was and I think there's just, there's just areas that are. Been holding water for a long time and when you're just use a, a new trench, uh, that water finds the weakest path. And it, it wants to migrate to that trench and then when it can't migrate outward laterally from that trench, it goes upwards. Obviously, as it fills, so I think, uh, yeah, we caught it in time, uh, did cause some damage, but in the end it's. We're gonna have to patch in about, I think it's about eight percent or so of the parking lot.
So Ken, um, I know there's a bunch of coves still up, are we gonna keep it up for the remainder of the summer, cause I know it. When that parking lot gets full with the pool, it gets.
Yeah.
A little crazy, cause people don't have space and, and they're, so.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I think it's in our best interest that we leave them up, we could pull them.
No, that's not, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I know, it, it does, it is causing a little bit of hardship, yeah, we were able to pull the one back along, uh. Sunset there, so they can get around the end cap there that we have striped on that front aisle of parking, but, uh. Yeah, it's one of those things you just don't want, and that could be part of the issue where it was coming from is. To begin with, it's just traffic on it and the pumping action occurring, you know, when you don't have a pavement structure. Covering the area, so.
Cool.
No, I think we're sitting, yeah, we're, we're, we're out on the parking lot, I, in the end, I imagine they'll be paving that in early September. Both on the parking lot and the roadways.
Uh, along that, Ken, uh, somebody asked me and I said, I don't know, I'll ask Ken when I see him. So here it goes, but like when you, when you do run across the drain tile, do you try to tie it in to the drain system or what do you do?
No, typically we just reconnect them, you know, and, and you leave it as is, cause we're not knowing what we're connecting to. That can be the other issue, you know, and, uh, right or wrong, and, and normally they, they're, they're dry. So they're all tiles that have been buried over time and maybe are, don't even have a surface drain or really a, a purpose anymore. Uh, but if they do have a purpose, I think it's in our best interest, we just recognize them, reconnect them. You know, that it's a quality connection that's put in place and, and care is taken to reinstall them. But, yeah, to tie them into our storm sewer system, not knowing, you know.
Understand that. Alright, thanks Ken, anything else?
Yeah, just, uh, otherwise project wise, uh, HOCS system out at the, uh, Highway seven and Montana Street Crossing. That'll start on Monday, the twenty-sixth, so a couple of weeks from now. Uh, headworks down at the wastewater plant is just getting underway with the actual physical activity at the site. So Tim's obviously keeping tabs on that, uh, you know, they've been ordering materials and, and such for over, well over a month now. But, uh, activity onsite is just starting. Uh, water wastewater SCADA controls project, we're hoping to be bidding that in August. And then lastly, I don't want this to turn into a big discussion, but I know I sent some information to council. A few weeks ago when it, it was brought up at a meeting and, and staff continues to hear about the. Upstream water elevations of, of the river in the basin and. Just wanna reiterate, we're going through a significant dry period, relish, and I, I hope people realize that, that. The, the dam structure and the spillway are not leaking, you can go stand underneath the Main Street Bridge. And you won't see a ripple on that water. Uh, so, and uh, when you can see dust particles almost landing on the water, it's still still, so, you know. The structures and we, we, we reassessed that when uh, bar engineering did that, did a study, you know, three, four years ago. Um, yeah, it's, it's dry, and it's been dry since last fall and, and we did not have, we had snow this winter. But the snow we had, you know, came in November and stayed on the ground, so it's not like we had a lot of snow. Events throughout the winter, so I just wanna rea- reiterate that, and basically, when you get to. A point where we have no flow coming upstream, which we're, we're in. The true measurements are, and this was re-verified just a few years ago when we resurveyed, you know, the structure. Uh, the old concrete weir was. Seven tenths, which equates to approximately eight inches higher than the sheet piling. And granted, the rock out there around the sheet piling is higher, even more so higher than the sheet piling. So when there is flow, it actually holds back more water, but it's to a point now where the upstream basin is below that edge of the sheet piling. So there's no flow coming over, so the true measurement is, you know, in the simplest of terms is eight inches. You know, when you get to a no-flow situation or very low-flow situation, and you know, beyond that, it's. We're at the, the whim, obviously, of, of weather and climate, so. Just wanna reiterate that because obviously staff continues to hear rumblings and chit chat. Anyways, for the tour.
Alright, thanks Ken, anything else, that's it? Um, Brandon, you have anything else to say?
I just wanna say thanks again to. Everyone, really, the, uh, residents of Hutch and the city staff and council, they're all great and work hard and do very well. Um, beg those move on Friday. So, won't be around until then, and then that's it, so, thanks and Godspeed. Good luck. The appointments.
So now we can call you a defect person or what?
Call for your approval.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Brandon for his service, that he, even though it was short, it was good and uh, interesting. And secondly, I was with Miss, when I talked about the brewery, I didn't thank Dan Hart and uh, Three B C uh, for the job he did out there, so. I just wanna insert that and say thanks and uh, did a great job, so, appreciate it, that's all I got.
Alright, thanks Dave. Ken?
I didn't have anything other than to thank Brandon for his service and wish him good luck in the future.
Aren't you gonna tell us everybody about your hot fishing spot? Probably not, huh?
Gary's referencing my son and I hammering glue girls today, so.
Well, it's kinda hard not to see anything when he goes, look what we did today. You know, on a Wednesday, you go fishing, I'm jealous.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Jumping ahead, you'll probably go fishing tomorrow too after you caught them all today.
Couple things, I just reminded, we do have a workshop before our next council meeting, that's at four thirty regarding the audit, or the twenty twenty. Audit. I wanna make note, um, Library Square Fountain is out again. Um, and unfortunately, it's continues to get damaged because people view it as a swimming hole. Um, and so I guess I would ask the community, um, to please stay out of Library Square Fountain. Um, the last two times, it's been damaged because of people going into it and hitting. The equipment that's within it, damaging it, which obviously then costs us money to fix and then without that amenity that. Many times people are asking, well, why isn't the fountain up and running, well. Because we have people going in and swimming and playing, um, in it, so I think it's important for. The community and the parents, a lot of times it's young kids that are in it, it's not a. It's not a swimming function, it's not a pool, um, and so, uh, but I wanna note that it's out again because of, of damage to it. Um, and so lastly, thank uh, Brandon for his uh, seven months of service, um, he was always good at giving me a call and. Asking questions and usually he would say, this is probably a stupid question, and I always said. Not my, much rather you ask and uh, I'll gladly share, so I appreciate uh, the short time that you had and the service you gave to the community, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks Matt. Uh, Brandon, yep, thank you for your service and good luck in your future endeavors. And you're always welcome back here, so if you come back, stop in and say hi to us, okay? Alrighty, um, just wanted to mention one thing, uh, first, I think we are all aware of, uh. The labor shortage happening in our community and throughout the nation. I just wanted to take a moment and remind all of us that take some extra patience for those that are working. Some people are working more or longer shifts than normal to cover the lack of available labor. Let's not lose our temper and take the labor situation out on those who are working. Again, have a little more patience, both public and private employees. Um, you know, and I know, uh. I was just uh, aware of uh, the problems we're having at the aquatic center and. We're just talking about that and, um, you know, everybody's busy and. Um, you know, we, we have a nice amenity, I wish we could have everything open, but uh. We are pressed for help sometimes, so, uh, we're short-staffed and uh, just be a little patient and uh. The people that are working, you know, uh, they're putting their time in, so. Have a little more patience. Uh, with that, the Germans in order.
Make a motion to.
Go ahead.
I'll second Brandon.
I'm in second by Chad, to adjourn, all in favor?